All right, now bring the meeting to order.
It's okay, it's okay.
Okay, we call the meeting to order and I'm gonna move the approval of the minutes from July 23rd and also from October 22nd. And we're gonna move right to the case before us, which is case number 2025-7. So the application for a variance. And if you wanna come forward, that'd be great.
Small cheers.
You're Mr. Pelkey?
Yes.
So what we'll do is you'll present your information to us.
Yep.
If there's someone here who wants to speak in favor, they can after that.
Yep.
Also, people opposed, come back to you for any additional comments you have and then go around one more time to anyone who's here in favor or opposed.
Right.
The members of the board can ask questions at any point. And then once we finish with that hearing portion, then we'll close that portion of the meeting. It'll just be deliberation amongst the board. Of course, at that point, if there's something else, it's too late. So anything you need to tell us, you can tell us beforehand.
Yep.
And we'll have you go through the conditions to address the requirements for the variance that you're seeking.
Yep.
It's a requirement that you read that, so it goes into the record. So I guess with that said, we can get started. Explain what you need to do or you want to do.
Well, my name's Mike Pelkey. I built a brand-new house over in Sherwood Forest. Got the information I needed from the town hall. Not the builder's, but he wasn't around. From the girls, they gave me everything I needed. Thousand square feet, egress, smoke detectors, everything I needed to do. Built the house. Towards the end of the house, I got a letter from the building inspector saying the mechanic room was part of the ADU.
I'm sorry, Mike, I messed up here because I need to also enter into the record that some information that I forgot to do that, so I'll just pause you for a second.
All right.
And just note that we're here, this case is for a variance and the application involves tax map lot 101, lot 37, located at 17 Nottingham Road. Propose you states 1,000-foot maximum size for an accessory girl unit, ADU. And the selectmen, well, I think the rest of that we could probably get into. The application references Article 18, 18.31A. Get it all to the record.
Right.
So again, you're, you have, you're, part of your construction project is an ADU.
Right, right. That's what, that's what's happened. So my foundation's 1,200 square feet. And I was told I can only have up to 1,000 for the ADU. So the boiler room, I got pictures of it, I don't know if you guys had pictures of it. Framed it all off, had everything built, sheetrock's in, power's in, everything's in. Didn't come to the end, I just got a letter in, I think it was October, or before that, from the building inspector saying that I had too much square footage. When I Googled, I mean, the information I got, I had no, when I went to the town hall, they gave me the information, they didn't give me a piece of paper saying that if my foundation was more than 1,000 square feet, I can't put an ADU in.
So just so everyone here could understand, I know we shouldn't read the application package, but just to make sure it's on the record too. For the hearing here, so you have a, your square footage of the footprint of the building, the foundation.
Yeah, foundation.
1,200 square feet. And you have a, the ADU would be in the basement level?
Yes, locked all basement.
Which includes the utility room that you're talking about?
Right.
Okay.
And then I was looking through New Hampshire stuff and it says, I mean, in New Hampshire, the ADU itself, the mechanic room's not part of it. It's habitable space that you live in it. So the boiler room's not habitable. There's no windows, there's no egress windows, it's a boiler. Everything that has to do with the house is inside the basement, locked.
That's a bit of boiler room, but the utility room services?
Utility room, no sheetrock on the walls.
It services both the ADU and?
Right.
And the upstairs?
So it says in the answer, if it's servicing both, it's not part of the ADU.
Is there any way to enter into the back mechanical room that doesn't involve entering into the ADU?
No, you have to walk to the ADU. And that door's locked, don't I mean? If it's an emergency, by law, I could go in there anytime and fix it. If there's a plumbing leak, fire, or whatever it is. And given a 24-hour notice, it's not, she, my foster daughter, she don't store clothes. It's not a place to store clothes, I got pictures of it. It's my tools, plumbing tools, anything for the house and stuff.
So.
But I wasn't told, don't I mean, if your foundation was bigger than 1,200 square feet, you couldn't do it, don't I mean? This is basically what's happening right now is.
Right, I don't, I mean, the foundation could be any size, it's really just.
Right, you can only have, you can only have 1,000 square feet. So if you have another room, the way, the way, the town, the state don't look at it, but the towns looking at it, if you have another room, it's part of the ADU. It's in the square footage from foundation to foundation, outside wall to outside wall. That's what I was pointing out at the.
Yeah, so the issue for us here is the ADU is limited to 1,000 square feet.
Right.
And because of the way you constructed the house with a 1,200-square-foot footprint and there not being a means to enter into any part of that.
Well, the whole thing is, when I, when I.
That's the issue.
When I, when I did the septic and everything, septic, the framing, the building inspector should've came right up to me and said, hey, Mike, you need to do this, you need to do this, don't I mean, this is not, the plans were all there. No, I mean, coming down to the end of the, coming down at the end of the project to say, hey, now you need an entrance? Every, everything's finished, don't I mean? I didn't get a frame inspection, I didn't get electrical inspection, I didn't get a plumbing inspection. It was take pictures, take pictures, take pictures, through my whole three months of building the house. Now, when it comes down to the end, he comes in my house and says, hey, now you need, now you have to make an entrance, you can't do this. I'm just going by what this says. I didn't, don't I mean, to get into where, this is my first ADU ever built. So to get into this, it's, it's just, it's too bad. No, I mean, I built a beautiful house, don't I mean? And now I'm going through this where, and I told the people in the office, I said, this is gonna bite someone in the ass. And it is, it's biting me in the ass. I could've, when this thing was getting all framed, before it was plum, electrical, sheetrock, flooring, I mean, everything. I could've rearranged it during the framing, to build, to have, put a whole nother, wherever I had, wherever I had to do, I could've done it during the framing. Not towards 99% of the building's done and my house was never inspected. Pictures, I got 150 pictures, don't I mean? I took pictures. The electrical guy called up, take pictures, take pictures. My electrical guy was shaking his head. The insulation inspection, the foundation inspection, the drainage inspection, every inspection I called for was never inspected. It was take pictures, take pictures, take pictures. Three months of building your house, never once was that building inspector at my house. He came during the middle of the framing and told me to put three brackets on. The interior of the framing wasn't even done.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's something we, you know, we can't address.
I know, but no, I mean, now it's coming down to where, what I did, don't I mean? Hey, you know something, I did what the girls basically, the people in there basically knew what to do. Don't I mean, they said, hey, Mike, this is what you have to do. If I knew I needed another entrance into the boiler room, I would've built another entrance. It's, it's not a big thing when you're framing everything. But when you're all the way done, done your house, and someone comes up to you or someone sends you a letter that says, hey, the, first it was a stairway. I said, this should've been caught on the thing, don't I mean? You send me a thing with the stairway, but the stairway, then they said, oh, you don't need the stairway. So that went away, but now this square footage went, I mean, it came up.
Right, and that issue with the stairway, because it changed, it was a change.
Was a change, so it's, it's.
Alive this year.
Right.
But now you didn't need to have that.
Right.
Second thing, no means to get into that.
But I mean.
ADU from the.
Right, and this came up, the only time it came for inspection is for the meter. The meter. I couldn't get, I couldn't take a picture of meter because the Eversource wasn't gonna put the thing on it. So he had to come for the meter. And that's when he said, oh, Mike, by the way, you need, he called me up an hour after he left my house and said, hey, I didn't know you were building an ADU. Then no, I had my septic designs as ADU, everybody knew I was building an ADU. If you did a frame inspection, you walk into the basement, you'd know there was an ADU being built. Even with the plumbing, the electrical, everything that was happening should've picked up at the beginning. No, I mean, I'm not using it, it's locked up, I'm not using it as part of the ADU. It's not for storage, I got too much money tied up in boilers, water systems, generators, the electrical panels down there, there's no, there's no venting, there's no nothing.
No questions from the board members?
I've got, I have a few issues with the town ordinance, not with the, with the variance.
Can you speak up?
Sure. So the letter that we received from Ken Folsen, the town administrator, said they aren't allowed because there's no access from the primary residence. The building code doesn't require a primary access to the basement. You can build a house for the first floor, no stairs to the basement, and have to go outside to get into the, into a boiler room. There's no requirement for a stairwell.
Right.
So to say that the boiler room now becomes part of the ADU when it's a shared common space, that goes against the RSA.
Yeah, I think that's really what we need to observe here tonight.
So if you, if, if we can.
I can say, are there questions for the applicant?
No, I don't have anything for the applicant.
All right, um, is there anything else you wanna tell, Mike?
I don't know, I just wish I could've, this would've all been stopped right at the frame. Frame, when I had the framing inspection, that's what all the stuff radiation would've been caught.
Yeah, we can't really address that.
I know that, but to me.
But I appreciate you.
The town, the town building inspector, worked for you guys, worked for the town, should've picked up this during the framing inspection. I would've framed it all different if I, if I would've known. Now I don't know and now it's becoming part of the ADU.
I think the boiler room is in the back.
The very back.
The very back.
Back corner. No, I mean, my property's on a hill, I could've came out this way and then put a door out. I could've put, I could've put a door out the side. But the way it is now, even if I went to go do it, I'd have to go out the back. The driveway's in the front of the house, that's where the, I mean, it's eight feet of dirt.
So it's below grade.
Below grade. Then coming down, I got all my septic, my water, electricity's coming in through the front. I mean, the other side, I'd have to, I'd have to rip out that whole bedroom, change the whole heating system. You're looking at major, major construction just to make this happen and it just, to me, to be here and stuff, it should happen.
There are no more questions. I'd ask if you could read through the application that you filled out. There is a series of statements in there about the, I mean, what you're asking for and how it conforms or does it conform to the requirements. And I guess we have a requirement that you go through that and enter that.
No, let's, I don't have the application. Now, the application, what's the application for?
For variance.
For variance.
Can you?
That's what you're applying for.
I don't even have my glasses, anybody has readers? Article section zoning ordinance involve Article 18, 18.31A, 1,000 max. The selectmen said I have to add mechanic room to the, to the ADU.
Yes, a series of in there, of questions that you answered in there that were. Or maybe it starts around the bottom of that page, I'm not sure.
The zoning restrictions as applied to the applicant, property interferes with the applicant's reasonable use of property considering the unique settings of the property.
Yeah, that's the list.
Property is new construction and this issue came after the completion of it. And I didn't write anything for no fair substantive relationship between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance. Didn't understand that. An area of variance is needed to enable the applicant to propose the use of the property given the special, the increase of square footage of the ADU of utility room couldn't info square footage of average ADU. The benefit sought cannot be achieved by some other methods feasible applicant pursue other than the area balance, all finished, no access by the door. Authorized variance will not be conveyed to the public interest, true. Spirit of this ordinance should be observed, substantially justice done in use of structure resulting from the authorization of variance. Utility room not for storage for the ADU locked. No discrimination value surrounded properties would be suffered by the results authorized of the variance, true.
All right, thank you for doing that.
What?
Appreciate you doing that, thank you. Something to require. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the issues and verdicts? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? All right, well, back to you, Mike, and the board, are there any questions? Just for information about the structure and the circumstances?
I don't think, I have a problem with it's not livable area, it's just the access that I think is the issue here.
What's the alternative? I mean, are we done with questions and we move into discussion?
I have one question, I just wanna clarify. So if this was the footprint of your basement, exterior wall, exterior wall, exterior wall, the ADU would essentially be from here over and then there's a piece of it?
I got a picture of it.
I see pictures of the utility room, but I don't see a floor plan of the.
But it should've been a town, right here. They didn't use on this corner.
And so the rear of the house is all below grade?
Yes.
So in that picture from.
Well, the front, the front of the house is below, it is locked.
So like the utility is?
Right there.
Right.
Anyone else wanna see this?
Is that like right there?
Yeah.
Where the truck, where the truck is?
That's what I'm imagining.
So in the picture from the tax card, there's, there's a white truck up here.
Yep.
Is right, is it right next to there?
Yep.
Does everyone else have that? Any other questions from more members? All right, I could ask if there was anyone else who, again, would not speak in favor or in opposition. I think that's enough, but just have to go through that process. So I'm gonna close the hearing portion and try to reach a decision. All right. At this point, fortunately, you can't give us any new information. Yeah, I think the, the issue is, I think, as you're saying, access to it.
Yeah, access.
Because it seems as though from the information provided by, what's that? Can't get the correct name. From the New Hampshire Urban Association, their legal services council that we have, that, you know, it does seem like we have latitude to decide whether or not it needs to be included or not in the, in the calculation of the space of the ADU. But I share your concern about access, I mean, and future access, you know, when the house is sold and is no longer more related, who's, is in there? What challenge does that create?
Because this is for family.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Forget that. My understanding is that initially the occupant would, but again, you know, what happens in the future.
Right, that could change in 10 minutes.
In 15.
So there's no building code requires access from the upstairs to the downstairs?
There's no code, now there's no code that requires access from the primary unit into the accessory?
With the, with the ADU, correct. But if you had no ADU, there's nothing that requires that you can go from the upstairs to the downstairs internally. You can go outside the house to come into the basement. So that would be no different than mechanical room. If there's no ADU, you'd walk outside, go through the basement.
Well, the difference is that you've traveled through the ADU to get into that mechanical room.
But if the primary owner either has to be upstairs or in the ADU. So it would be no different than if you had, owned an apartment house with one, a duplex and you owned both sides of it and you had to go into the, into the duplex in order to go work on mechanical. You have to go through their living space to get into it. I don't see any difference between this and that scenario.
Except it is, in this case, it's not a duplex, it's an ADU, so the primary. As long as we're just owned by the, by the, you know, the owner of the site.
I, even if it's an ADU, it's still a two-family, same as a duplex. That's how I've always looked at, at ADUs.
So, oh, go ahead.
And if I could, I'd also add, if you, if you read through the ordinance, it's the way the town has it, it says 1,000 square foot gross living space, or gross area, not living space. If you go, we don't define living space, we don't define habitable in space in this town. If you look at the building code, it clearly in the building code, it says boiler rooms, utility rooms, even in some sections, hallways, block, that's not considered living space. So if you, if I look at it that way, I'm still under the 1,000 square feet. But we were to look at, an example would be a 500-square-foot, a 20 by 25 foundation, first floor, second floor, basement, ADU on the first floor, that's 1,000 square feet between the first floor and second floor. The RSA says you have to have, the town can't regulate anything under 750 square feet. So the way the ordinance is written, if you count, if you count total gross area and the living space is on the first floor, it would be 500 square feet. It wouldn't meet the RSA for 750. So to me, the ordinance needs to be corrected and clarified so that this doesn't happen in the future.
That's, yeah, but again, that's not what we're here for.
Right. I'm gonna point out that there's a problem between the ordinance and the RSA if I see it. The building application clearly says two-family. So this, these issues should've been pointed out the day of the application, not when the CEO goes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that could be considered as part of the hardship. But again, we're not here to have to make any decision based on that. A little bit entering it into our thought process.
Yeah.
So I feel that because it's not habitable space, it's different. I do have concerns with the access. But to your point, the ordinance says gross floor area, showing the sum of several floors of the ADU measured from exterior walls, I do think it needs to be changed. Because if you have a 1,200-foot basement, you put in a 500-square-foot apartment, even with its own separate entrance, this says that it would be the whole definition of the basement.
Right, I mean, we have, again, we have.
Yeah.
We have the, the ability to make a decision as to whether or not it should, should be included.
But I feel so since it's not habitable space, it's different. But I do have concerns with the access, but I don't think that's our issue. I think that would be either some sort of.
Well, if we do have a concern with it, then I think it does enter in because, you know.
My concern is not from a zoning standpoint, it's more of a future, what happens if, you know, another person accesses that.
And I guess that's, that's what I think, maybe something we need to grapple with because we do have that concern and, you know, you're allowing it to go forward by giving it, by giving it a variance, that's, you're, you're allowing the ADU to exist if we have a concern, but I don't know if we have a concern. I think we have to explore that.
I don't see a concern, I mean, it still has, you can get to the utility room through the ADU. I mean, if you're concerned about that with someone you're leasing it out to, I mean, you can just, you can get, put in the lease that you have access to the utility room in the event of an emergency or you need to go shut off the boiler or there's a leak with your control tank or something like that. So why wouldn't you grant this variance? I mean, there is no alternative besides, you know, making, dig out the back and do a bulkhead or maybe cut a hatch in the first floor to go straight through, but I just don't think that's necessary. It doesn't make sense to me. You should, you have access to the utility room so long as it's a necessary or emergency for you to go through the ADU and, you know, you don't need permission from the tenant in, in the event of an emergency.
Exactly, right.
No, typically, typically we do, you know, use the rules that, you know, if it can be achieved in some other means reasonable, then we would request that. But I, but I think it goes down to the reasonableness of excavating and cutting a hole and going right to put in a volcano.
That's not reasonable, I don't think.
The other, the other point here is the variance isn't for access issue. The variance that we're, we're going for here, is going for is a square footage issue, not for access.
That's what I would.
Access isn't even, shouldn't even be a discussion through, with the board because that's not what we're here for. The variance is strictly on square footage, not access.
I don't think you'd include that boiler room as square footage in the ADU.
No. Presumably, the occupants would not, the ADU would not be able to use that space. They couldn't use that space. But I think that would satisfy me that.
I think it was stated that it was locked anyways.
Okay, yeah. So I think with the condition that it's locked and not usable by the, by the occupant of the ADU, then I think that makes sense to me. For the discussion? Anyone wanna make a motion?
So there's two alternates, right? You're still an alternate, I'm an alternate.
Yeah, you're, yeah.
But you have to.
So the occupants don't vote?
Do you have enough voting members?
We do.
Okay.
Only four.
Okay.
We have four.
Right.
Thanks for bringing that up, but I should've, I should've mentioned that at the outset, so appreciate you saying that. But we do have, yeah, we do have four.
Okay.
And three alternates, so. Again, we wanna make a motion. Is it with approval?
A motion to approve.
All right, I guess we don't have to read out the conditions. But I think it's reasonable to say that, well, in summary, you know, we feel that that space should not be included in the, the space considered part of the ADU as, with the condition that, you know, would be not be used by the occupant of the ADU. Is that it?
Yeah, I agree.
Sorry, man. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Contradicted? All right, so there's granted the variance, yeah. But in a three-year period, if someone could come and make an appeal to the board, you know, it's unlikely.
Yep.
But I don't think it makes a difference at this point because you've already got the building constructed, but, but yeah, there was that 30-year process. It'll appear.
All right, thank you.
So it seems as though, which is clarified, the note you was asking me earlier, that procedurally, we are supposed to make, make the applicant go through those conditions and that's something we didn't used to do, but that's a toll we did need to do and then I was subsequently told we did not need to do, but apparently we did.
You just need a scorecard to keep up.
It's, oh, that feels like, like ping pong.
We've been reading through them ourselves, right?
Why?
The applicant needs to read through them.
Exactly. And they, and we were told at one point that we should be the ones doing it. Again, it's, it's flipped a couple times, but.
Things just keep changing.
The current rule is that they need to say and we don't, which is great. But, yeah, and so I guess we can move back to approval of the July 23 meeting minutes. Does anyone have any discussion, corrections to those minutes? Or can we vote on approval? You have one that was today, October.
Right, and I corrected that.
Oh, okay, okay. So all in favor of approval of the July 23 meeting minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Contradicted? And then we have the October 22 meeting minutes, which there was a correction made to by Webb and already corrected by Lisa. And are there any other discussion or corrections that need to be made to those minutes?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted? All right, now, let's see, what else do we have in here? Procedural and conduct of hearings, yeah, I should, oh, it been moved? They were over there. Were we talking, were we talking about the?
Yeah, I think they're posted behind Calvin.
Is that?
I don't think so.
They were, they were over by that.
Yeah, I maybe they're gonna get laminated.
Someone kick them down?
Right.
I think they're gonna be laminated.
Okay, but I believe.
Oh, no, there they are, okay.
I believe that everyone has received a copy of those. I guess, or have any concerns about them, the things we should discuss? It seems logical to me.
Right, yeah.
Doing it so far.
I think we had generally been, been following them prior, you know, without, without them being written out, but it's fine that they're, no. I think we had generally been, been following them prior, you know, without, without them being written out, but it's fine that they're, no.
So I have a couple of procedural things to let you all know about. We will not be reviewing our revised bylaws until after town meeting. There's just too much going on at the town office for those bylaws to be looked at, gone over, addressed, like Cal. So she just wanted to let you all know, she apologizes for the delay, but there's just too much going on right now, so we can look forward to doing that after town meeting. And I did ask her about Chris's wondering, about his term and when it ended. It ends at town meeting time, but it is his prerogative, it is his, his right to step out anytime he wants to. I'm just not sure I wanna tell him that. I probably will, cause it's the honorable thing to do, but I did get clarification on that, so.
I think it did come up anyway, it was what he was talking about, he didn't really, but I think it did come up, that he is.
Yeah.
His re- what he could get, what he done.
Right, and as of right now, we have nothing for December and Jim isn't going to be here, so unless you know you're going to be here and would act in his stead.
I ain't going anywhere.
Okay, we might not have anything for December, but I'll.
But if you do, great.
Yes, thank you. Thanks.
So, so if, if the new policy or the new state rule is the applicant has to go through the criteria themselves, then someone on the zoning board has to go through the application because he did not answer two in his written application. So in the, it was a more, if you had a butters here that, that opposed it, then they would have, that would be grounds for an appeal, because he did not answer number two in the written application. Where before, as a, when I was on prior zoning board and what you guys have done all, all along, is if there was gaps within the application, the board kinda helped them through it, filled out those gaps.
Yeah.
But if we can't do that, this application could be easily appealed, if someone wanted to.
Well, it's my understanding, my understanding in years past, that when someone came with an application, they went through the criteria for a special exception or a variance and responded to each thing with a written statement. His was more than a little brief. And, and, you know, short of calling somebody on it and saying, you know, you need to say something. I don't know, it's awkward.
Nope, you, you have to do it, because the prior, we, when I was on the board before, there was, these types of applications came in all the time. You know, that, some of them came back, looked like they were written on a napkin. But the board sat around, they came up with the five, five criteria to help them through it. If we aren't allowed to do that now.
Oh, I don't know that it's a matter of being allowed, but for the last hearing or two, we've gone through the criteria as we responded to the decision, rather than the applicant reading his criteria items and speaking, addressing them.
Yeah, but in this case, there's no board members that have gone through the five criteria, so it's, if it's, if it was a hundred percent reliable on the applicant.
Right.
And they do not address everything in here, if I'm the butter that doesn't want the project to go through, right now, I could appeal this, because he did not fill out number two.
I would argue though, that the, the board has been provided with the full application and we reviewed that. I think if we had issues with any, any particular point in that, that we would go into. I mean, I think you're right for completeness, it makes sense to do that, so it's more sensible, just in case you have someone who wants to.
Right, you can't have a blank, you can't have a blank, you can't have number two or, or one of the five criteria with no response on any application. That right there would make it an appealable application.
Yeah, a number.
I, I, I think we could ask him to address it, we probably should've asked him to address that.
Probably should've.
Yeah.
This, this came as a bit of a surprise to me tonight.
Right, well, yeah.
My recommendation would be in the future, at least come in, if you have the applicant to fill it out and put something in writing, so that it's in the record.
I mean, we could, we could kick them right back at them and say it's incomplete.
Yeah.
You'll let me know, you'll let me know when you're done, I'm sorry, I turned it out by mistake.
And, and I guess that, we should talk about it, if that is gonna be our procedure. If it's, if it doesn't have an, actually something in there, and it's administratively incomplete, it should be returned.
The backup system is the Zoom.
The Zoom?
The Zoom recording.
He's talking about the application.
The application.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry about my tape.
So, so if, and if an applicant comes in.
Yes.
And then, you know, Cal should be, I guess it's Cal now?
Right.
Does it, if she sees a blank, then she needs to kick it back to them and tell them to.
Right. I'll solve, I will follow up with that.
In my brief tenure, we've been helping these applicants through it, but the application needs to be filled out incomplete. Are we still able to help them through that?
I think we probably could discuss the item, sort of address that issue.
Cause I, I think for people that don't do this every day, that's the only way it's really fair, is to, when they need a hand, they get a hand to get through it as long as it's complete to start with.
Right, and once we were going, we were rushing through it tonight, you know, or I'm rushing, as we were going through it tonight, you know, I understood what the issues were, I think we all did.
Sure.
And, you know, so those are the parts, you know, how you want to phrase them too, it's very subjective. I, I wouldn't agree with how he wrote necessarily in the application, but in terms of the points that were relevant. You know, so, motion shortcut.
I think, I know we have the opportunity to expand on his answer.
Yeah.
Saying that true in what way? Or false in what way?
I mean, if we have to do it through questioning, we can do it that way.
But it should be, as there says, it should be complete, everything should be.
It's, yeah, it's true, and I think we, I think, you know, that's the pitfall, we're having it the way it, it was and we fell into that tonight, but in general, I think we've been doing it right away. And we just need to kinda change how we go about it, in terms of making sure that they answer them all, I guess, I mean, also in the rest of you, if you see something that we haven't, speak up.
Do we have opportunity to update the, the template that goes to the applicant to indicate that they'll be required to read these?
Next question.
Oh, Tom.
We have a land use administrator, this is what she does and helps people do, so if there's an application that's incomplete, give it to her, she'll review it with you and help you through the process, this is why we have that job position. So there shouldn't, they shouldn't have come to you incomplete.
Right.
That's, that's sort of the, this is non-existent conversation, the fact that we have a professional who does this, this is her job to process those, if the applicant has any questions, they go to her, she is the resource, so.
Does she triage them and?
You're supposed to, that's, that's what they try to do, the, the secretaries and the land use coordinator go through it, administrator, whatever the title is called, they go through it, they look at it, make sure it's complete, once the application's complete, it then gets processed for a hearing. So if it's not complete, there shouldn't have been a hearing, if that makes sense.
No, it makes complete sense.
So it's, so you guys don't, you don't have this problem about, ah, two's not filled out, five's not filled out, they didn't answer three, we don't wanna waste your time, so this administrational hiccup shouldn't happen again, I'll talk to them at town hall tomorrow, or Wednesday on our.
But we can also be looking out for it.
Yeah.
But I completely agree, we'd like Cal to do that, take it back, is it just.
Well, it's not Cal.
Oh, it's not Cal?
It's Michelle.
Oh, Michelle, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, well, Michelle.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that would be one that I would definitely bring up with her, cause that shouldn't have been processed through, if it's.
But if we got something here, I think we would probably not be so harsh as to say, see you later, you didn't answer number four. We'd probably try and work through it.
Right. I think you do bring up a good point though, I think that it should be at least on here, that the questions need to be answered to be a complete application, I think is where Randy was headed.
Yeah, in my short tenure, the only person that's really been prepared was the person that came in with the lawyer. Everyone else, we've had to like kinda guide them through the process and what the expectations are. So even if there's like a what to expect when you go through your hearing doc, so that they know.
The other thing is, I think the town needs to look at the zoning requirements under ADUs and, and cross-reference into the RSA and to the building code to make sure they're complete. Cause right now, our, the way I read our zoning, we're not in compliance with the RSA on a couple of the issues. Cause in reality, the variance night should have also been for the egress, because that's in the zoning, but it's not part of the, our, the ADU requirement. Cause in our zoning, it says we have to have access from the primary unit to the ADU, which is, which was removed from the RSA in twenty twenty-five, it was there prior, but it was taken out in twenty twenty-five. And the amount of ADUs that I'm seeing coming through my office now is increased, is, every house has an ADU that's coming through our office now. Proposed or, or, or being remodeled, everyone's trying to get an ADU, because the rules are so lax now for the state. So that should, the, the town should look at that.
You're saying the RSA, they removed that the primary residence needs access to the ADU?
Yeah, it used to be that you had to have a, a common wall or a door between the primary, and that was removed under the newest, the RSA that was signed by the governor in July of twenty-five. And the town can't dictate, there has to be an egress and ingress to the, to the ADU, but the town can't dictate how you do it. That's very specific in the RSA.
Yeah, that was, that was in the packet.
And then living space versus habitable space, because it varies town by town. Some towns that we work in, hallway, closets, even the bathroom is a, is living space, there's kitchen, living room, bedrooms.
But I, yeah, that's what I felt, if we excluded them from that specifically as a condition, then, then we were making it clear.
But we don't define, in the town, we don't define it, it's just gross floor, so.
That certainly could be refined. I mean, if we have something like that we wanna suggest, we should bring it to the select. Maybe not. All right.
Are we good?
Are we good?
Yeah.
So, I think for me, motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn?
All right. Seconded and confirmed by somebody, and per adjourn.